It's 5 o'clock. At this time, I'll call the work session Monday, December 18, 2017. Order please, we have a call. I have three items for review and discussion. Item 3A, this is from the Fire and Emergency Services Department. 3A1 is the presentation relative to the replacement or upgrade of certified fire equipment. Chief Parker?
Yes, Mayor and Council. I have a short presentation to go through. I'm gonna stand back here, that's alright. Alright, so discussing the apparatus replacement request, I appreciate the Mayor's comments at the Christmas party the other night, the fact that he was kinda like Santa Claus, and that he wanted to make sure that we all have what we need to get the job done, but we won't necessarily get it unless we ask for it. So, we're here to not ask you for it.
I didn't say which Christmas you get it in.
You're right, sir. So discussing our agent fleet, most of you know, I'm sure, that some of the apparatus that we have are at the end, or nearing the end of their lifespan. Just a couple of comments here. The National Fire Protection Association, they say that if an apparatus is more than 15 years old, and it has been properly maintained, and it's still in a good serviceable condition, it should be placed into a reserve status. However, those apparatus that are 25 years and older should be replaced. So, you see here, we have Truck 2. This is the truck that's out at the Davis Farm Station. It's a 1996, 75-foot ladder truck, and like I said, it's about 21 years old. In 2016, it responded 406 times. As of December 1st, it had gone out about 369 times this year. It has 114,000 miles on it, and 10,750 engine hours. Earlier this year, we did have the aerial tested, the ladder part, and it failed its slatter test. Basically, the hydraulic cylinders on the back are not keeping the ladder up like it should. To date, we've spent about $140,000 on that truck, and estimates to do some of the repairs it needs right now are about $30,000. Engine 2 is currently our reserve engine. It is also out of Station 2, the Davis Farm Station. It's a 1992, 1,250-gallon-minute pumper, and so it is 25 years old. It has pretty much, is at the end of its lifespan there. It is currently out of service. We have done some work on the transfer case and the pump, and currently, when they put that back together, it would not go into drive gear. So it will not actually drive out of station right now. And estimates to repair that are upwards of about $11,000. The next piece of equipment is our Engine 1. This is the engine that's currently at headquarters, or yeah, headquarters. It is a 2006, 1,500-gallon-minute pumper. It also has, like the truck, has 114,000-plus miles on it, and 10,000 engine hours. It responded to 1,026 calls in 2016, and to date, or as of December 1st, about 100, or excuse me, 1,025 calls this year. And it actually currently needs to have the, some work done on the engine, and some pump repairs also are imminent. And as you see, I did bring my backup with me here tonight, my muscle, and one of the things that they have said is, they said, "Chief, we are about one major emergency away from being really embarrassed with some of the equipment we have, and the fact that it could fail on us during the major emergency." And that's something that we really don't want to happen. So what I want to show you, I showed you what our current status is, I wanted to show you some new apparatus. If we were to go out today and order a custom aerial platform, which you see there is a 2017 Sutford mid-mount 100-foot platform, it would take about 12 to 18 months to build that truck, and it would cost us right about $1,174,000. And that's fully customized with some added equipment on there. The same thing with a custom pumper, again, about 6 to 12 months build time, and we're looking at about half a million dollars, or $503,000 for that piece of equipment there. So, trying to be good stewards, one of the things that we did as an organization, we looked into an organization called Brently Mountain Fire Apparatus over in Union Grove, Alabama, and they sell used apparatus. Now this company has been in business for over 16 years. Last year, they sold 591 trucks to departments all over the country. And this year, they've sold 640 trucks so far this year. So they're not a, just a fly-by-not-top business. So what we looked at over there, for example, is a 2009 KME mid-mount 100-foot aerial platform, very similar to the brand-new one I just showed you. This truck is, like I said, is an '09, it has 12,600 miles on it, very, very low mileage, and the asking price is half the price of what the brand-new one costs. So we're very, very interested in this truck. It also, being that it's a 100-foot platform, it's a longer ladder than the ladder that we currently have, which will be able to reach the three-story apartments that we have now, and some of the, hopefully, the proposed things that are coming here in the future, like the idea of a conference center and hotel out at the fairgrounds. Here's a couple more pictures of it. We actually, what they say is you fly the aerial, we actually got in, rode it around, and to see how everything operated, it operated very well, and we actually drove this truck One of the other trucks we saw there was 2013 Pierce Custom Pumper. This truck was, had 16,000 miles on it, but the price on it was about $395,000. We thought that was a little high, but I just wanted to show you what we did see while we were there. Another vehicle that we saw that we were very impressed with was this 2011 Mini Pumper. The idea here is very similar to the rescue truck that we have. We were very proud and pleased to get that rescue truck, and currently, as of this month, this ran about 160 calls, the new rescue truck has. The idea being that this truck right here, we would put out at Station 2, and it would be able to take the massive response off of that ladder truck that would be out there. Okay? So we would run this truck as a rescue out there. And as you see there, it had 100, or excuse me, it had 17,000 miles on it, and they're asking 129,000 for it. Then the next slide, what I wanted to bring out here is the fact that there are what they call stock apparatus. These are fire trucks that have already been built. It's not necessarily a demo truck, like the ladder truck that we had in the past. These trucks have been built, and they're ready to be sold. The price is there. Of course, there might be some added features that you want to add on to these trucks, but you can see there that a brand-new truck, as opposed to the used one that you saw there that was $395,000, this one here, the starting price is about $380,000 for a brand-new truck. So again, being stopped, you eliminate your 12 to 18-month lead build time, and you have a brand-new truck. And that's one example, is an E1. Another one here is a Pierce, about $380 on that one as well. And then of course, you're gonna have to probably add some equipment and things like that, the trays, the slide-outs, and things like that. And then also, here's another Pierce truck that's available right now, which is right at 405. So again, a lot less than the $500,000 you saw for the brand-new pumper that you'd customize and have built over 12 to 18 months. And one of the things that these dealers, the truck salespeople are telling us is, if you're buying a brand-new truck, you have to add about 5% additional cost per year. So every year that we wait, we're probably 5% now, 10% the next year, and they're gonna keep going up as far as that goes. So, with that, just as a general idea about cost, what I did, I called our representative at Georgia Municipal Association, and talked to them about a loan. Just for your knowledge there, about a million-dollar loan would cost us approximately $117,230 a year, and the first payment would be due one year after that loan was closed. So that kinda gives you an idea there on what we'd be looking at. So really, what our line is, what we're requesting the purchase would be the used aerial truck at approximately $499, the used Mini Pumper at approximately $129. And being used vehicles, there is some wiggle room on the prices with those. And then the new pumper, somewhere between $380 and $410 would probably be a good price on those. Again, plus or minus a little bit on us customizing it for Perry, putting different lights on it, trays, slide-out trays, and things like that. So that's what we wanted to bring to you tonight, and again, thank you for your continued support. Any questions that I might be able to answer?
People buy lottery tickets tonight.
I'm prepared to do whatever it takes.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. Do you have any need to join in? Add anything to it?
I think we're here to just have any questions.
Council?
In Kensington, we have all this money that we need to buy that. All to add on that would be, would come to the cost.
My estimate would be right about that million, or right about that amount, about a million dollars. That's for, that's for three trucks, as opposed to the price of just one brand-new aerial costing a million dollars. Buying the two used trucks, we can get three pieces of apparatus for a million dollars, which would be the cost of one brand-new one.
I think the question was, what, in addition to the million dollars, what does the add-on cost?
I'm kinda including all that in there, so I'm looking at about a million dollars would do it.
Total commitment?
Yes, sir.
That's when you need it. What, you got two trucks down now, right?
Well, right now, actually, today, our ladder truck got out of the shop, so we were able to take Peach County's fire engine back to them. So we're up and running with all of our apparatus except for the reserve engine. The reserve engine is still downed, it's not operating right now.
And we've been using that Peach County truck for, that part of the month.
Yeah.
It's breaking down on the regular basis?
Yes, sir.
Prior to that, we had a House County unit.
Sir?
Prior to Peach County's truck being there, we had a House County truck there.
We take turns, so we borrow it from.
Overextend our welcome.
That's a good question. Councilman King's asking, is there any salvage in the existing truck?
Yes, sir, we believe there will be some. We talked to the folks at Brently Mountain that have the used fire trucks, and one of the things that they're doing, they're building us an estimate right now on what they might could give us for the, or they would tell us what they would give us for the ladder truck, and the reserve pumper that's down right now. And if there's any trade-in value, they would take that. So that would come off the price as well. Now, if they couldn't take them, then we'd have to put them in surplus and sell them to the highest bidder, or however that works there. But we believe that the ladder truck, for example, and this is, you know, somebody doesn't know that industry real well, but I think that they might give us $30,000 for the ladder truck.
Mr. Walker?
I think this has been an ongoing discussion we've had for the last couple of years, as if not, that we've got a constant problem with keeping our equipment. I really don't want to be in an embarrassing situation when somebody's house burned down and it comes to the fact that our trucks are not serviceable.
Or someone at Peach County's house, or a house in town, if we care what it takes to move it.
I know it's a very difficult decision, but I think you guys have done a tremendous amount of due diligence, and I really thank you for coming with an alternative rather than saying, "We need one truck for $1.2 million," right? But you're confident that these are gonna have some period of life?
Yes, sir.
Because it's 2009, so now we're working on, what, now it's 29 years old next year. I know it's got limited miles on it, but we will not see continuing maintenance on these trucks, I would hope.
That's our desire with that. Once Brently Mountain, if we were to go with them, they would go through the apparatus at our request, we'd do a punch list, if everything's wrong with it. Currently, they would repair all those items. Once we got the truck here, and if we have the idea, again, being that having the Mini Pumper out there with it, the Mini Pumper's gonna run all the emergency calls, the rescue calls, and things like that that are not an actual fire. So our desire is that truck will be able to stay in station most of the time, and only run the structure fires. Therefore, again, limiting the miles on it, limiting the maintenance, the wear and tear, all those kind of things, and give us that at least 10 to 15 more years out of it. So I would not see us needing to replace that ladder truck for another, hopefully, 15 years.
Any warranty come on those trucks?
Yes, sir, they do provide a warranty. They're at Brently Mountain, it's a one-year warranty, and it does have a dollar value to it, but they have assured us that they have never reached the dollar value, and they're a very good customer service-oriented business, and they have done a good job of kinda selling that to us and showing us what they've done, and I think they would do us right. If anything happened to those trucks, they would take care of it.
Mr. Gilmore, the funding is coming out of General Fund.
Part of it would be from General Fund, part of it would be from a fire protection fund. Fire Protection Fund, for it to be able to handle its estimated dead service load without any increase in the fee. General Fund, I think, can handle it better. Right away, I go.
I gotta ask, a lot of these car companies would buy something from it, and give you a loan, if theirs, if yours breaks down, if they have any loaner trucks.
We had a loan to pay for our debt. But they made us feel and understand that they would do whatever it takes to kinda earn our business and keep us happy as a customer. Because they, one of the things they assured us, they have plenty of return customers. Again, selling 640 trucks just this year, they're doing a lot of return business from a lot of folks. I mean, then we're talking to departments that can only buy used vehicles, they can't afford to buy a brand-new fire engine at any time, they buy used trucks from them. They're the biggest seller on the East Coast.
Have you contacted anybody that has actually purchased one?
Yes, sir. Chief Dole's over in Peach County has, and currently, the Fire Department down in Savannah, next to Savannah, called Chatham, they've got nine trucks being built right now, or refurbished at that location, that they're purchasing. I think five pumppers, an aerial, a tanker, and a couple other vehicles that they're doing, they're having built. So they're buying nine vehicles from them.
I think one thing that stuck out to me, if I can make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Is the fact that they're not just out buying used vehicles, they have people that follow leads, like say, Orlando Fire Department buys 10 fire trucks in a bulk purchase branded from Pierce. Well immediately, somebody's going to Orlando Fire Department saying, "Hey, in five years, we want to buy all these trucks from you." Because they're on a, they're on a replacement where in the five-year market, the trucks are gone no matter how many miles or whatever. So that's where they're getting these apparatus that hadn't really been heard, and they're getting them in, and then we come through with a punch list, and they can make all the, if there are any repairs, they can do them all. The company really made us feel welcome, and, you know, they're in the sales business, but when we got there, we walked in the building, and they had all the employees for downtown, and they were having a morning devotion in the office at one side. And it's owned by a fire that was done wrong in the business a long time ago, by buying the used apparatus, and he said that would never happen to anybody again as long as he was in the business. 16 years later, he's still doing it.
Are the extras, just a second, Chief, are the extras that are on our existing equipment transferable to the ones that your department are purchasing?
Yes, sir. Most all the equipment that we have, the axes, the breathing apparatus, all those kind of things would just transfer over. If we did get rid of our apparatus, it would be a bare-bones piece of equipment. All our extra stuff stays with us. Yes, sir. And that's a big expense there we wouldn't have to put out, you know, for all the tools and equipment, you know? So yes, sir.
Chief?
I just want to echo Chief Crump. I made contact with a friend of mine who's an EMA Director for Charles County, Maryland. That ladder truck, that platform is actually coming from Montgomery County, Maryland. So I contacted him, trying to get some information on that truck, if he could put me in the right direction. And I asked him what he knew about Tower 75, and he said, "That's Montgomery County's truck." I said, "Well, yeah, what do you know?" He said, "Montgomery County takes care of their equipment." I said, "Well, then why did they get rid of it?" His response to me was, "Probably, Montgomery County and Charles County are two of the richest counties in the United States. They don't keep anything wrong." So they took care of their toy, they sold it, they got him a new toy. You can go online, look up Kensington Fire Department, and actually see this truck going in service, going in route, and different calls. The truck is in good shape. US Navy has two of their trucks in there right now being refurbished. So they're a very reputable company. We looked at a lot of different stuff, and, you know, getting more, I've been here a long time. I was here when that 1992 KME, that was my baby, that was my truck. It's been here as long as I've been here. The reason that truck is here as long as it was, is we had that little small rescue truck, if some of y'all remember. That's what took the blowout of our cost. We ran that truck, we basically ran to, ran out. Now that we've got the new rescue truck, it's basically taking its place, it's doing all that too. It's keeping the mileage, the hours off of these trucks. That's why that 92 lasts as long as it will.
One more question, Chief, is that, are all the apparatus already on the truck? Y'all are capable of putting it on another truck, or you gotta get somebody to do it?
No, sir, we can.
Transfer it?
We can transfer it all over there. Now, what I was saying, like, for example, on the brand-new pumper, for example, if we got it, we probably need some of the slide-out trays, and some of the pieces that attach the equipment on there, because once the equipment goes on the apparatus, it's gotta be secured, that's the requirement for that. Especially anything that's inside the cab has to be secured, so it doesn't fly around in case there's an accident. But there'd be some things like that we'd have to purchase to make sure it gets secured properly. But yes, sir, all the equipment, axes, pipe holes, ladders, all those things would go on there with the apparatus.
Council?
I suppose you ought to make the best deal they can make on those three trucks. I'd like to talk to Chief finally, of course. Wally?
Yes.
Merry Christmas.
It'll be in the stocking.
It'll be in the stocking?
It's all right, it's about coming up. Just wait on my Christmas talk next year.
I'll be looking forward to it. We'll give Santa lots of rides next year in the new trucks. Anything else on that?
Anything about it?
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Item 3B. From Economic Development, Department 3B1 is a wayfinding prioritization discussion. Mr. Schmitt?
Mayor, Mayor and Council, hopefully the Fire Department that use up all your holiday spirit generosity.
We're trading water, right?
We were to come before y'all for this. You'll remember the last work session, we had the guys from KMA, the design team, we put together our wayfinding system, come before y'all. I didn't give a presentation, wasn't that good of a presentation, but I assure you, the final product is very quality, and I feel very strongly about what they put together for the city. So moving forward, I'm sure some of you were taken aback by the initial cost estimates and the price tag that was provided by the consultants. So it's something we're gonna have to phase in. And what I want to get in front of y'all tonight, were some of the products that were produced, and kind of a general, maybe generally aware of what we're looking at here, what the wayfinding system is comprised of, that type of stuff, and get some guidance from you all in regards to how you'd like to proceed. It is, it's an expensive project, but it's something that, it's your wayfinding system, it can do whatever you want in regards to rolling this thing out. And what I envision taken away from your discussion tonight would be putting together a prioritization schedule that can be utilized in rolling this thing out, implementing it, fabricating, installing the signage. So, the beautiful signs that were created? I know you saw this, and I know you can't make heads or tails of what's going on here, but this is the citywide wayfinding system as it is. This is the wayfinding system that was developed for downtown, they broke those two out so you can see it better, if you really can. But you'll notice it's broken up in quadrants based on colors. Each of the signs here are delineated, and it'll be a messaging schedule, and I'll show you a sample of that here in a second. The messaging schedule is a very, it's a long document, but it has every sign in the city, its location, the signage type, what it's gonna say on it, all that type of stuff. And then the signs. Again, you know, y'all, y'all have been going through this process with me for a year now. You've seen the signs, you've, who'd be like the signs, and it's finally come time to put the signs out there. The numbers in the top-left corner correspond to the sign it's typed. So this is our main entryway signs, it's sign type number one. And again, going back here, you can see it will correspond with the sign types onto the system, just kinda laying it out here so you understand what we're doing. Sign is type two, this will be, this will basically replace your city limit signs, current city limit signs, that are kinda haphazard in the community right now. This is, again, just some of the directional signs that we're looking at, single panel, dual panel, the kiosks, very big one, kiosks for downtown. This is a city facility identification sign, so we're in the process now constructing in front of City Hall, a very public, very public safety complex. Another identification sign is what we utilize for parks and other points of interest in the city. And this is a city municipal destination sign that we utilize as well. So again, I hope you like the signs, I think they look very good, and it's really gonna be a high-quality product, the focus is on maintenance, longevity, that type of stuff. So as we, you know, work on replacing our existing signs, I think it's something that could be there for 15, 20, maybe even 30 years. And then the price tag that we mentioned at the beginning. I know it's a lot, so if you want to go ahead and get into how we're gonna implement this, let's, you know, please feel free to interrupt me and kinda talk about what y'all are thinking in regards to doing this thing. We've isolated the signs, as you kinda requested, breaking it down into sign types throughout the community. This is a gateway sign that's out there at House 127, kinda near Matt Arthur and the Punch Club. These are the entryway signs that'll replace the current city limit signs. And then so on and so forth. You know, I've had it broken down, kinda how you want to see it. Again, I apologize if you can't see what's going on here. We need to do something about enhancing the quality, and getting all the quality documents I can look at, you can actually look at, and I'll try and get that to you tomorrow, also have a report pack. So just going through it, does anyone have any ideas or thoughts about what y'all would like to do? I see a lot of people looking at what's going on, what's kinda going y'all's head on this. You know, I'd really like to have something to take away, to put something together for you, it's a little bit more precise.
I thought we had talked about, well, maybe we did, the entryway signs first?
Yes, sir.
And then identifying these buildings, secondly, and then the parks, and that type of thing?
Yes, sir.
We do have this, but go ahead there.
I was gonna say, I guess the limitating factor would be, how much of Phase 1 are we gonna bite off? And then what are we gonna push to Phase 2? And 2 and 3 are having, I mean, that we need to do. I guess Mr. Gilmore needed to ask you, what can we stand in Phase 1? And that probably will.
Well, I'll just start off, may be able to do all of Phase 1.
Well, to start off, may be able to do all of Phase 1, but I doubt it. Going back, what you had done is you set up a priority relative to signage identification for city properties.
Right.
And that was in a series of phases. And the first one is what you already okayed.
Right.
On the entrance sign deals, when you had the presentation, you just asked to see where they were. You didn't take any position one way or the other. And that's what we're here to confirm or get an idea from you all of which way you want to go. And I don't know exactly how far we can go in a particular one, so it's going to depend on what it is that you want to do. Because there's obviously a big difference between the major entry-type sign, you know, brick-type stuff versus the ones where you're coming into the city when it's on the post. See what I mean? But what I think Robert has up for you here is a suggestion list, at least initially to start. I'm not sure if we get all that type of stuff. But that you would, for example, focus on, at least in the stands right now, now we're talking about the wayfinding signage, okay? Is that focus on the major signs coming into the city.
Are you with me on that?
Okay. So, that, that gives you, that gives you an example. So, right now, according to this concept, there is one location for the monument sign, which is right up where Sam Nun starts. We're in, which way you're coming?
Well, that's correct. What's looking sign is?
You know, right where you have the point, the split.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's the one, the one identification sign. And it's not that you can't have any others. Don't get me wrong on that. But the consultant said that's, that's the, for the monument.
We put this one cord there, that sign. Oh, that's kind of tremendous about the monument on that sign. I would want to clear, would be getting too easy to the optics to do anything with that intersection.
Yes.
Would you hate to put another sign if you're letting it be torn down without a plan?
That, that is correct. The other thing with that, based on that location, is, kind of following up on your idea, at least from my perspective, well, that's a big, major sign. Is that exactly where we want it? In other words, you're already coming through a bunch of town before you see that sign. You know, which, which may be okay. Now, you take a look at, see the secondary entrance signs there? Everybody see where I am in that second group there? Okay? Those are the single post ones. Remember, you had the presentation there. And those are lined up on all the ways that you're coming into the city. Everybody see where I am there? You know, Highway 41, 127, House, see what I mean? Every single place where you're coming into the city, that's where you would have those type of signs. So, at least, you know, from my perspective, to make the biggest kick right offhand, I would say, "Well, I think maybe we ought to do the secondary signs." Add them up. So, that gets up, that's, is talked about, okay? Then the next thing might be about some of the directional signs. Particularly, we'll work to get an answer from the DOT if we can, the monuments, okay?
And they're very aware of what's, what's going on.
Yeah. But, you know, some of the other directional type of signs, we may be interested in focusing on, but they might be on some particular areas. You know, for example, you may want to do the kiosk in the downtown. Everybody see where that is there? Okay. Or you may want to go out and, excuse me, replace one of the signs that's out at Perry Parkway and Airport Road. You know, where you're coming in the airport, remember, that was one of the examples they gave. It's kind of a poor sign right now, a little small type of thing. You might want to come in and upgrade that. Everybody with me? You may want to say that, you know, you do the secondary entrance signs. And the next area we're going to take a look at would be all the appropriate directional signs that have been identified on Perry Parkway. Because so much of the traffic and stuff coming through town and going around is on Perry Parkway now. See what I mean? So, that's what we're interested in you to, to think about. I will tell you, we do not have the money to do all these signs. We don't have the money to do half the signs. We don't have the money to do a third of the signs. Okay? And that's why we're saying, you know, you need to prioritize them. I mean, you can either prioritize them in some particular groups, but that may cause delays, see why, depending on the size of the group. Or you may want to do some, some type of mix, like, for example, on the directional type of things. There's a whole bunch of stuff, but I think one of the major ones should be that we take a look at having the directional signs to get you to Rosier Park. Why Rosier Park? Because we got a lot of folks coming in from, out of town. You know, we've got the World Center there. You've got the, the different folks coming in to play ball. You know, whatever the case may be. Same type of thing, like some directional signs to Creekwood Park. You know, because we have a football program there. We have the adult softball plays there. Everybody, see what I mean? You start talking about major areas on where you'd like to go. A kiosk for downtown, I think, would be a very important thing to have, wherever that is located. Now, remember, after that, there are other directional signs, stuff that keep orbiting downtown. But I think the primary thing, because remember when the consultant was talking about the wayfinding? His, hers, its position was that this signage, you're not so much interested in addressing people who live in Perry or from the immediate Perry area. You're talking about trying to approach and give directions to people who are coming in from out of town. Not totally from where you live in Perry. And also, you know, the secondary entrance sign type thing, like we originally did on the other ones we put out, we're advertising Perry. You know, we're pushing Perry. We're telling people, "When you come out of Houston County, you're coming into Perry." And that's what this sign's purpose is.
Our dad did not own the type of sign, but which ones will give you that type of...
I thought about that, Mr. Jackson. We could look at maybe traffic counts, that type of thing. Actually, like a data-driven type of prioritization.
Do you say that some signs, at least some signs right now, gets destroyed or messed up? Do we repair it before you put places?
Yeah.
A car going through a sign that might be existing.
Well, this is just something that, you know, I've put together. It is based on a conversation you mentioned, Mayor, that we had last time with the secondary entrance signs and stuff. And then what Mr. Gilmore was talking about. These were your high-priority city facilities. And then the kiosk downtown, I think that'd be a really good thing for downtown and at the Sam Nun. So, again, you know, we have the full scope of signs, so it's whatever y'all want to do.
I would, I think I would make a recommendation that staff put together, a complete recommendation, based upon, you know, the most, the ones that would be the most important in directing people. If it's over the Perry Parkway and the Rosier Park and Creekwood, I'd like to see a presentation coming back that says, "Okay, we'd like to do the secondary signs because those are important. We'll put the main monument sign on hold until we get total satisfaction from the DOT that that sign is in the right spot or could we need to move it somewhere else." But then come back and say, "Here, here is our recommendation based upon the highest profile of these signs." And do it in, if you say we can pay for 25% of them, then put together a proposal that says, "Here's using up your 25%." And here's the timeframe that I... We can sit here and talk all night long about what we think is right, and I can tell you it would be wrong. And so, what we need...
Oh, no. Oh, not you, huh?
Well, you know, one thing we even said, I was, I'm interested in that, our major profile. How many, what role that we got moved out, people...
What's our highest?
It was like, well, that's what we need to really lock in. I mean, we know people come off interstate, they come this way, and that'll be an obstacle for them, you know, to move in different directions. And that's it.
Well, with the use of the art center, right? And we're using it 300, 300 days a year. We probably ought, you know, that ought to be high-profile. You know, and you guys say, "Well, that's right, but we think that Rosier's high." So, I think we just need to, we need to do it on data more than just, you know.
So, a combination of destinations and the, the data, the traffic count data. The GDOT does have a point person on this project. They're abreast of what's happening. And we were actually looking at the traffic counts a couple of weeks ago going through this stuff. And they were amazed at how high some of our traffic counts were here in the community. So, the data's there. We could definitely assemble that, kind of prioritize things, and get something back to y'all. It's not a problem.
That's good, Counsel.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 3B-2 is an item that his partner has asked for us to pull it for the moment. Item 3C is under administration. 3C-1 is considered options for... Excuse me, don't say it all, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council in port pack got it provided to you and outlined based on the current requests that have been made for the structure at 803 Comer Street, which is known as the PBO meeting place, also known as the Old City Hall. You may remember that we were advised that the roof needs to be redone. So, you awarded that bid. That bid was for 11,800. We've also been advised that there's been a request from the user agency that we need to make some ADA accessibility repairs of that building. The estimated cost on that is at $26,000. I don't think it'll be any less than that. It could be more. I don't think it's going to be $100,000, but, you know, that gives you a ballpark. So, for those items, that's $37,800. The administration position on that is that since the city, the building's not in the city's long-range plan for use due to the age and limited size, we may want to consider that we tear down the structure and continue during this, collecting Charles C. Avenue. Now, if you determine to do that, it would not be done immediately. A tenant would be advised the timeline to relocate. The other thing is, you may say, "No, we think that's work well-function. We want, don't particularly feel that there's a need right now to remove the building." That's fine. I do want to advise you then, we are going to have to pay that 26K right off the bat. It is not something that we can wait on since this is tied to ADA.
Counsel?
Can you talk to the DOD about this situation?
No, not yet.
Well, as all of you, I'm sure, know, Mr. Frank is disabled. He lost him. And in order for him to use that building, it's going to have to be remodeled. It might have to have handicap bathroom in it. And it's not going to be easy to do because that safe is right that way you would like to put it. So, I had suggested to them that we put it in the back room and open the back up or door for them to kind of put it back. Which is a lot less expensive than trying to put it up front.
If, if there is a less expensive method, certainly would occur with doing that, Mr. Hunt. However, we did send our chief building inspector over relative to check to see that ADA. And this is what his estimated cost was.
I guess not only this cost, the building itself is in very, very poor condition. I don't, I don't see this the end of the tenement to spend that money. I would, I think we'd be better off to find a different location for them than trying to continue to repair this.
I think we would, I would think the same thing that, you know, the process of that, we have a point that we need to do something with the building that should not get rid of PBO, so we find another location that makes it locate to.
I'll work with them, right?
Right, right.
Rather than trying to, you know, these old buildings that are here, trying to put ADA in is almost impossible. It really is.
I think you have two different issues here, but what we do in the building is one way. Paying that street.
I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not endorsing we do the street. I don't...
I don't see the big function there.
I don't, I wouldn't jump the hoops to do that at this point in time. As far as continuing to put money in that building, I'm just trying to...
That's what I'm saying. I think there's two differences.
Yeah, they're two different things, I understand.
And this question, would you consider selling it to PBO?
I don't know.
But either way, if we do, we ain't got to beat up the Fed. And you got to come up with it. And if we say that, you know, he...
There would be a serious problem with it. But I'll make you, you have to do that then.
Yes.
You couldn't use contract. So, to then, you'd have to put it out for this.
We, we could put it out for bid if, if this counsel decided to invest ourselves in that asset. But it'd have to follow that, that policy. So, that's an option, Mr. Hunt.
At this point, what would he do?
Well, here's, here's, here's where we are.
Okay.
We are, the city owns an asset that is currently being used for public consumption. It does not comply. We have had a request to bring a portion of it into compliance. So, our request for us tonight is we need to decide if we're willing to put the money in it to allow this part of it to comply, like we talked about. Or go to Plan B. Plan B would be, no, take it off the public consumption market and then do something different with the building. It might be to, to sever. It might be to tear it down. But, but if we make a determina, if we make a determination at this point that, that we, we don't want to put the money in it, then we have to close it for public consumption. Is that not correct? So, so that, that's where we are.
And with withdrawn bid for the roof at this point?
That I don't know.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
Okay, so that's already been placed on us.
As soon, as soon as this ADA issue can be satisfied, advised, or had vendor advice...
And to me, this is just, it's a, it's an economics. That's not a proper word. Well, it's a, it's an economics question. Do we want to put money into an old building or not?
I would say no.
So...
One other option I'd like for us to consider is, if PBO weren't remaining there, they'd like to repair it themselves.
They probably wouldn't make for that, if they wanted to build it.
Oh, yeah.
I'll determine the city attorney on that.
I pray that you were.
Well, you got this, man.
I mean, I guess technically, but...
It would be, it'd be at least all the proof of it, for them.
It would. You're asking somebody else to make improvements to a property that you own. He has to, to want to do that, especially if they were to move out a year later and y'all get the building, find out improvements for it, huh?
Well, let me clear that step, a step further. But assuming we allow that to happen, and for whatever reason, the contractor that they hire, whomever it is, didn't technically conform to the ADA standards, we're still on the road.
Yeah.
It's, it's a liability issue at that point.
Same problem or worse, if the contractor comes in and is a half-done or it isn't done right. Or the party originally agrees that they're going to do that, and then they see it's going to cost them 26K. Hold on. All, all of this, like the mayor and Matt were talking about, honestly, it all comes back to the city. One way or the other, it's long as you owe it the difference.
I'm just trying to get all the ideas of when whomever faces Mr. Frank, they got the answers to give. And we want to do everything we can for PBO people that have been an amazing part of our town for, for 20 years. Been a long time. The man is giving more money away than you can imagine. It's to help the poor.
Well, we're not going to kick them out of the company. If, if this council decides that it is not prudent to move forward economically with this building, we'll do everything within our power to relocate it.
I'll work with them.
Probably find somewhere else, yeah.
Needs are needed.
Because their, their needs, it's not anything that the city has done. From what I heard tonight, this is being driven by, their needs changing.
Right.
And so...
And, and that's fine?
Yeah, but...
It's not that we don't want to help.
I understand.
That has it.
If he stays there, we're going to have, somebody's going to have to accommodate his ability to enter and leave that building.
That's right.
And I also have... And I also have bathroom facilities. Absolutely no way he can get into the bathroom through there, it's, it's a box. I mean, somebody's poking him out, but I don't believe that's gonna happen. Little Gerald won't fit in there. He can't get in there without permission.
Nor can anyone else.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's, as I can find. Counsel, let me ask you this, if you, if you would like. Please take this under advisement, and we'll put this on the agenda for tomorrow night's pre-council meeting. Will that give you enough time to think about it, sleep on it overnight, and just have a resolution tomorrow, because we need to, we need to make a decision sooner than later. Is that okay with the council?
I wouldn't want much, that much, I'd wanna talk to Mr. Frank, see what he's got as our, and I don't know, but, I'm, I'm gonna have to come see him tomorrow.
Well, Mr. Hunt, I, I appreciate that, but, he doesn't own the building. And, and we've, we've got these options available to us, and, and in order to, to do that, and I know that, um, I've had some conversations with Mr. Wood, and assuming he's talking to Mr. Shelton, so, I think he's in the look on, on that, but, but we, that, his opinion really don't have an, an, a bearing on the decision at this point.
I would think so. He's a smart man, and he's intelligent in as far as what I, what we're gonna do, or we think, if, if he knows about it, I don't know what he knows about. He's been mighty sick.
Well, my offer still stands, counsel, and then, Mr. Hunt has an alternative, uh, to postpone until our first meeting in, in January. What's, what's your pleasure?
Counselor?
Now, it's my understanding, what will be on a relative to the agenda, is not ruling out any of the options you're talking about, Mr. Hunt.
No, 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 no.
It's that the city takes the position, it is not cost-effective for them to make the ADA improvements.
At, at this time, or period.
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 Yeah.
And then, and then, and then if Mr. Shelton has something that we haven't thought about, we'll, we'll be glad to reconsider.
Or, or, I don't know if they want to do that, but, as you would obviously, that Mr. Hunt talked about, is what they, PBO wanted, buy, you know, something.
But there again, you're going back to, you're gonna have to put that out.
You'd have to put it out for bid.
For public.
Which, which is a risk that person, you see what I mean, but, are some other type of, you know, options relative to that. I think the primary thing, like the mayor's talking about, is you need to decide whether it's a yes or no for the ADA improvements.
Or Indian group.
So, that's, yeah, that's...
At this point. That's correct.
That's correct.
Because we're being asked to consider thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay. And since this is a council, just to take it up again tomorrow, pre-council. Anything else? Item three C two is considered a joint agreement, will be given a free survey, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the board pack is a proposal to do a LIDAR flyover survey, and the particulars are provided in the attachment for you, for the, along Big Indian Creek between three forty-one South and the city corporate limits. Uh, the estimated cost on that is fifty thousand dollars, which is a considerable sum, wish to admit that. However, as I mentioned in my memo to you, uh, that cost will be shared between the county and Mr. Hunt. Both parties have indicated that they will pay one-third. So, we're talking the city's part about one-third of the flyover. Now, if the flyover, if y'all agree to participate in this, uh, it'll probably be Houston County that does the contracting, since they're also dealing with the firm this year for their landfill, so it's just easier to go that route with them. However, we will have, obviously, equal access and share to the debt. As I mentioned, the debt is not only good for future trail planning and everything which we have talked about, but also with the level of the elevations and everything possible, sewer line extensions in service in that area, which is part of our period service area. So, the administration's recommendation to you, under the circumstances, would be that you concur to receive subject to revision.
Counselor?
It'll be useful in several ways.
You don't understand what the LIDAR does, the survey, the LIDAR survey? It's a flyover, but it's, it's a way of literally, my understanding is a way of literally mapping the ground under it, um, for, that's just like a topographical survey from the air. Um, and it's a lot cheaper than paying a surveyor to literally walk the property, and then do the same thing, because the majority of this property is weapons. And they're, they're doing it in the wintertime, which is the perfect time to do it, from that standpoint. And the county does this on a regular basis, even right on, on their, uh, like, landfill, like, for, from that standpoint, and so they've, they've had some history with that, and it's a very good product, but it's not cheap. But there are more expensive options. So, that, that's what the purpose of this is. And, for example, for our trails program, that will give us an opportunity, just to see where the high spots are, and where the potential trail could be. Um, and that's important, in order to identify exactly where we could go for future negotiations with, with those property owners, in order to make all that happen. So, one thing has to happen before another, and that's why some of the nuns are very interested in this, and, from that standpoint, I'll refer that before, with Mr. Jackson's, and I think Mr. Walker and both, had a period of times over the last several years, as Mayor Proton's attended some meetings with, with the, Mr. Dyer, I covered all of that appropriately. He's been involved in this quite as well.
But it's, I'm saying, none of this would be in, within areas of the city.
Correct, that's correct.
Because this is all outside, this is all, we're just participating with the county at this point in time.
That's correct.
The county is the one that's taking the lead on that. That, it'll tie into our trails.
That's correct.
And it'll also potentially lead to a city park.
That's right. That's part of the longer range plan.
Good. Item three C three, council authorization to two additional full-time police officers, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, also in your board pack data is a memo from me recommending to you to proceed with the last phase of the adding additional full-time police officers. Remember, a few yard, years back, went through the analysis, made the determination of how many different officers, many more officers to add to the force, uh, that was all subject to the availability of funding. We added all the positions except there are final two remaining. If you had a chance to take a look at the proposed recommended budget for the FY eighteen, there is funding available in there to pay for this, and so, we recommend to you all to concur to proceed.
Any objections, counsel?
Yeah, I don't object, but I don't know what you call it.
What of the standard, calls for adding of, of, an officer, Chief Lynn, you know Rob Man roughly?
Not with all the benefits, uh, I'm trying to think of the number that Mr. Gilmore put in the budget last time. The, uh, the starting pay for an untrained person is thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars, I believe, and for one that's certified is thirty-six four. And then there's benefits and equipment on top of that, so, probably in the hazard, yes, somewhere in the seventy to eighty thousand dollar range per...
Now, that's, that's a little high.
A little high, okay.
A little of the factors, is you have a startup cost, we talked about that, initial outfit, but you don't have that full-time, plus this, this way here is only half of that salary cost.
That's a good cost.
We have adequate reserves to cover that in the short term, because we just, uh, put some new vehicles on, online.
Any other comments, move forward? Chief, you wanna add anything to it?
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Item three C four, review the proposed bad debt policy, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, for you, review is a formalizing of bad debt policy. Uh, we have been operating underneath these guidelines, but going back on review, we noticed that it's never been formally set by council, so we would recommend to you all to, uh, accept that as the policy. Assuming that you do, if there's no objections, we'll just have this as a resolution. That's what we do with policy type stuff, which we'll be doing tomorrow. I want to have it on there in case there's any discussion.
Counselor?
I just want to...
Move forward. Item three C five is a discussion of the joint natural gas bond. I owe these two gentlemen to my left an apology for not getting with you prior to now on that, but, um, y'all may remember that, that, um, I made a presentation to council at one of our previous meetings, considering, asking us to consider moving forward with the city of Perry's limited, um, portion of this bond, the bond, the contemplated bond issue, in order to, um, allow jointly on natural gas to expand its physical assets, or adding additional pipelines, increasing, uh, the Bass Road Junction, uh, the equipment that's necessary, in, in order to handle, you know, the expansion of, of, of gas sales that we currently have and anticipate for the next several years, including a request for the city of Perry's to increase pressure, from that standpoint, to significantly help. In fact, it would be necessary in order to move forward. Now, I wanted to, if you have an opportunity here, and I'm gonna give you two more, for the specific details that they were included in the board pack meetings, which I'll, I'll keep with you. Would the, unless, do y'all have any questions concerning that? Y'all may remember that the timeframe for this, um, will include a build-out, they've asked us to have, um, if we're going to do this, for participation to have an approval, or authorize me to sign on behalf of the city, for approving this by mid-January, but I wanted to see if, if there's any questions that y'all might have. I don't know that there's necessarily a reason to wait that long, if, if we're, if we're willing to go ahead and do it now, um, from that standpoint. So, it's on the, the agenda tonight, theoretically, for, although tomorrow, unless you're not comfortable, including you two, we can postpone it till first meeting in January, I'm not trying to rush anybody, but I didn't want us to lose sight of the fact that this is nonsensical to a large degree, of any questions that they're gonna have at this point.
Remind me if you're allowed to talk to him.
City of Perry owns, if I remember right, fifteen point nine seven or nine eight percent of jointly on natural gas. The, um, liability that we would have in this bond issue is limited to that percentage, as it would be in any debt obligation to jointly own. Fifteen point nine seven percent of fourteen point two billion dollars, whatever that comes up to. A little, a little over two million dollars.
And all we're doing is offering guarantee.
Just like, just like, did you remember a couple of years ago, we came and had to order money for another upgrade?
Right.
It's the exact same thing. The only difference, this time, that was with a commercial bank.
Right.
And we have to renew that obligation every year, of, of legal issues that one council can't oblige a future council. In this particular case, the MGAG, Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia, um, is, can issue bonds, and they have done this in the past, and are willing to have a single bond issued to jointly own for twenty, twenty-five years or so, and we do it one time, um, from that standpoint. And if you may remember, it's, it's, they're gonna be, they've got somewhat favorable, they are, as a favorable, um, terms, from that standpoint, it is not callable for the first ten years, but it is after that build-out.
And, and the committed usage is already in that, to pay, pay, uh...
For our cash flow.
Let alone any residential burden or a future commercial burden.
That's right. If positions jointly on natural gas, to be able to provide the gas with the upgraded equipment, pipelines, equipment, et cetera, for future expansions, for all of the cities, not just, not just Perry's, but, Byron Moore Robbins, I'm gonna talk to him. Did, did that answer your questions?
Yeah.
Any other questions? If this is not fair, but it's okay if we're on the agenda tomorrow night, then, if y'all have any objections tomorrow, then we can forward it to the council. Is that fair enough? Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, anything else? I mean, there, whether, Mr. Gilmore, is there anything under item three, or, I don't sure if you have a discussion we need to address at this point?
I'm sure.
Item four is other business of the supplemental agenda for A, the twenty eighteen tell me a resourcing list. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your packet is a listing of, we are proposed to send to Georgia DOT for the LMIG program for two thousand eighteen, and if you have no objections, we'll just let you conference. You may remember, we had talked about Elko Road, remember that, you know, discussion there, maybe somebody have that on there? We need to do some improvements over on Charles C and Andrew Pike Circle, everybody know where that neighborhood is there? We have problems now at the end of that cul-de-sac, and we've got a, the street itself is in bad shape. And you have Talison and, and, you other ones just come.
Move forward with it? Anything else, Mr. Gilmore?
I'm sure.
Item five, our council member items. Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Van Price?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, just one thing. Uh, we've had an employee, we'd like your concurrence about doing any demands of eighty hours of sick leave, this is a relative to new employee, which, which, not have necessarily sick time to make up, so we'd like to propose to re, remember we've done this with other employees in the past, like your concurrence.
Counselor? Any objection? So, Bill? Anything else?
No.
Oh.
No.
Item six to Department head items. Let's start with Department of Finance and Administration, Ms. King?
I think so.
You, Department of Police Department, Chief?
I'm good tonight, sir, thank you.
Department of Leisure Services, Mr. Dyer?
Just some little small things. Uh, basketball games will actually start January eighth, once the kids get back to school, they're practicing now, and it's going, going pretty well. Uh, just around the corner, soccer registration for spring will start that January sixteenth. And, um, the, uh, the Whitetail Trail, the paving project is progressing pretty nice, they've made quite a bit of traction with a lot of, uh, sidewalk being laid, that extension's looking good. And last but not least, uh, we really enjoyed having the Christmas party out at the park. Uh, it was a very good event, a lot of the staff attended, and just really enjoyed everything about it, so we appreciate that, being the point this year for our evening Christmas party. That's... That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I might, if you would pass along, you and your staff, along with Ms. Warren, and first staff, and the committee, whomever had such, that particular event did a fantastic job.
Thank you, sir. I will.
Place looked great, and it was, it was, it was a lot of fun. Anything else?
That's all.
Department, Community Development, Mr. Wood?
Nothing tonight, sir.
You, Department of Department of Development.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of things. Mayor and council, Wednesday, January thirty-first is planned first day at the Capitol during the session, and the city's gonna be recognized, picture with the governor, all that type of stuff, receiving our award officially. If you can make it, please plan to attend. I know you'll probably be in Atlanta a couple weeks before that for Mayor's Day. I know you probably hate to go back, it's gonna be an all-day type of deal again. But we'll have it all set up, and depending on who wants to go, we can take the city's bus or the Central Jordan Technical College van. But it should be a good day, get some good recognition at the state level. And if you have any questions about that, please let me know. I'll send out a follow-up email tomorrow on this.
January thirty-first.
It's a Wednesday. Two-hour event, takes all day. And you'll be pleased to know that we have hired a special events coordinator, Ms. Haley Myers. She'll be starting with us on December twenty-seventh. We're gonna throw her into the fire with buzzer drop, she's gonna come in and. Get her acclimated to the city, have her meet folks, you know, meet people in the community, that type of thing. We think she's an excellent candidate, we're very excited to have her on board, we think she'll be a really good addition to the team here at Perry. We wanted to have her here tonight to introduce her, because she is gonna be at buzzer drop and all that type of thing. She's wrapping up her current obligations up in Atlanta, so she apologized for not being able to attend. But we look forward to having her start.
So you can somebody getting out of Atlanta?
She wanted to get out of there.
Anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Department of Parks and Services, Chief Parker?
Just one thing, Mayor, we did have a nice event Friday night at the Perry Arts Center. We had the Department of Christmas party, some of y'all were able to attend, we appreciate that. And we do appreciate the use of the facility very much, it was a nice event, so thank you again.
Congratulations, and my apologies for missing the night, been a little bit under the weather.
No problem.
Last several days, so, thank you. But same chiefs, we've got a couple of, y'all want to chime in? Any others? Thank y'all for your service, we really appreciate it. Ms. Farmer, do you have anything for us?
Yes, one quick thing. So I want me to do it tonight, but tomorrow, I'd like to take a picture, and maybe a video, so we can post Merry Christmas and Happy New Year for mayor and council. And I also would like to use some of the props from the Christmas party. So be in a festive mood tomorrow night, it's gonna be a fun photo, and I think everyone will enjoy seeing a Merry Christmas message from you guys, so. We'll do it maybe between pre-council and council is what I'm thinking. Thanks.
Counsel, okay with that?
Can we wear a Santa suit?
You can, if you want to.
I love the Christmas sweats.
Thanks.
That sounds great, looking forward to it. So I've got that one. Anybody else? Our next meeting is tomorrow, at five upstairs for pre-council, six o'clock down here for council. And I'll have some more at that time. But at this time, if there's nothing else before us, I hand a motion to be going through executive session for the purpose of personnel and real estate. So move, thank you, motion second, so there's no discussion, all just collaborate your hand, motion here, you have.